The time is 7:01, so in the interest of our East Lansing community, I'm going to call us to order at 7:01, and I'm just going to comment on how nice it is to be back in the boardroom. Ms. Holcore, would you help us with a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Chambers.
Present.
Dr. Lyons.
Here.
Ms. Ferris Hyland.
Here.
Dr. Edsall.
Here.
Ms. Comer.
Here.
Ms. Fink.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Our student representatives are not here this evening. And Ms. Liko.
Here.
Next on the agenda is the reading of our mission statement. Trustee Fink, would you read our mission statement, please?
Nurturing each child, educating all students, and building world citizens.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion related to this item, please?
I move the Board of Education approve the agenda for the April 10, 2023 regular meeting as presented.
Second. It was moved by trustee Martin. I'm going to call that seconded by trustee Edsall. Is there any discussion? Okay, we'll move to a vote. All in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please indicate by saying aye. 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 Any opposed, same sign? Okay, passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes, and we have two, both the regular meeting from the 13th and the March 22 special meeting. Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Education... Are you not wanting me to include the April 6?
And April 6, too. Just kidding.
I move the Board of Education approves the minutes of the March 13, 2023 regular meeting, the March 22, 2023 special meeting, and the April 6, 2023 special meeting, board work session as presented.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Edsall, seconded by trustee Lyons. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? It passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is recognition. So I'll turn to trustee Ferris Hyland.
I have one, and Kelly has a corresponding video to show once I'm finished. So Green Elementary kindergarten teacher Catherine Cluzak received an Excellence in Education Award on March 28. Given by the Michigan Lottery, Ms. Cluzak received a plaque, a $1,500 cash prize, and a $500 grant. She has been a teacher within East Lansing for seven years, so congrats to Ms. Cluzak.
Next week, Fox 47 and the Michigan Lottery partnered together to honor and award excellent educators across the state. And a recent winner is from right here in mid-Michigan. Now watch me write it. F-O-R. For.
Catherine Cluzak, Robert Elgreen Elementary School, and I'm a kindergarten teacher.
Catherine Cluzak always knew what she was meant to do for her career.
When I was in high school, I just knew I really wanted to be a teacher. I got to volunteer in my elementary school. I had some fantastic teachers in high school, middle, and elementary school.
After getting her undergrad in early childhood development and elementary education, she began her teaching career and received her master's in special education and postmaster's in administration while doing what she loves most.
I love watching kids learn. Every day has its challenges, but honestly, the brightest spots in my day are seeing students achieve something that they haven't achieved before, or getting to experience something new and just being so excited about learning. It's just the best feeling, watching them grow.
Cluzak says she's taught in various capacities over the past nine years and now finds herself teaching the youngest learners in East Lansing.
Kindergartners start at the beginning of the year as these tiny little humans who come in, you know, anything from learning to put their backpacks away to learning letters, right? That's how we start the year. And now I have readers in my classroom.
Cluzak says having an environment that promotes diversity and makes kids feel welcome is something she and Robert Elgreen Elementary strive for.
We have a lot of students with various religious, ethnic, racial, cultural backgrounds. And so it's really important to me that all of our students feel safe and welcome. And I try and create visual spaces that are accessible for every learner, regardless of ability, and I want them to feel comfortable.
Which is why she's one of the most recent winners of the Excellence in Education Award.
You don't realize how hard you're working until you get recognized for it, and people say, "Oh, you're doing a great job," or "Oh, you're a wonderful teacher," and I appreciate those things and I love hearing it, and it makes me feel really good, but being recognized publicly like this, it was... I'm a little embarrassed just because I don't love to be in the spotlight, but I just really enjoyed the experience.
Congratulations, Catherine. To nominate an excellent educator in your neighborhood, head on over to our website.
Thanks, Kelly. Next, for recognition.
Are there other items for recognition from our superintendent or other board members?
Well, this is just a question. A year ago, I believe it was, Sherri Martin won that. Wasn't it the same award?
Yes.
So, two years in a row. I think that's pretty awesome for our district.
It seems like you've done pretty well with these. That's amazing for our district and amazing recognition for our wonderful educators, of course. I think all of them are deserving.
I agree.
I'm biased. Any other items for recognition? Great. Then we would move on to student representative report, but I believe we do not have our students this evening. Lots of spring activities happening, so that is understandable. So we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Liko, I will turn this over to you.
Thank you. I want to start by sharing a little information about our East Lansing High School principal hiring process and timeline. So our process for hiring a permanent principal for East Lansing High School will begin with the release of a stakeholder survey to include high school staff and students and families in grades eight through 12. Chief Human Resources Officer, Alicia Glover-Pain, will be facilitating the process and interview committee. The survey will be sent out tomorrow morning. The interview committee will include members from multiple stakeholder groups, and we plan to have a candidate recommended to the board by the first Board of Education meeting in June. More details regarding the process and timeline will be communicated soon. Then I'm still including kindergarten registration information and links for 2324. One thing that's really helpful for us if... for resident families is to get registered as soon as possible, because we also have some requirements for submitting schools of choice slot numbers to the ISD in early May, so we can do a better job with that if we have our resident families registered. So if you know folks who have a prospective young fives or kindergarten student coming this year, if you could please share this, that would be helpful. It's on our website. We've shared it with the city and other places as well. And we also have kindergarten roundup coming up at May 9, so it's really helpful to get as many of our little ones in the buildings and going through our kindergarten roundup activities as possible, too. And then I want to share some school safety and student support updates as I did at our last meeting, which actually, we only had one in March due to spring break. So I have quite a few updates to share in this around school safety and student supports. So I'll start with infrastructure. First is the evaluation and adoption of the Rave mobile app system. So Rave is a mobile app that is used to communicate any type of emergency to 911, first responders, onsite personnel, and other identified individuals instantly by the click of a button. The emergency communication platform can keep everyone informed and engaged throughout and following a crisis situation. Rave will allow us to provide critical information, send updates, coordinate the response, and check in and follow up with individuals. It is designed to communicate in multiple types of emergencies, including active assailant, fire, police response, medical, and other situations requiring 911 assistance. The benefit of Rave is that it can be activated by personnel anywhere in and around our building. Additional exterior security cameras have been installed at the high school, and evaluation of other camera additions throughout the district is in progress. Administrator... Sorry, additional lockdown buttons were added in the high school office for increased accessibility for administrative assistants. I do want to clarify, lockdown buttons are different from panic buttons. And I shared a little bit about the Rave app. The Rave will provide direct communication with 911 for school personnel, no matter where they are, inside or outside the building, within an established geo fence. So that is our mechanism we'll be using for communicating with 911 that offers us much more capacity than just panic buttons in our main office. Personnel updates. All three of our individuals from DK Security have been hired to provide additional hall, bathroom, door, and camera monitoring and supervision. Around community engagement, we've been having biweekly meetings with our LPAT representatives and central office and high school administrators and board president Chambers. And then I also shared some other community engagement activities around the ELHS Principal Stakeholder Inputs Input Survey. A little bit around training, we had three central office administrators participate in a day-long behavioral threat assessment and management, short BTAM, training put on by the Michigan State Police, March 20. Additional school personnel have completed basic training throughout the school year, and we're sending a small group of individuals to attend the advanced training on May 15. From there, we will build a district threat assessment program. Elementary staff will participate in critical incident response training as part of the April 28 Professional Learning Day. This session covers a broad range of target violence hazards that include a violent intruder or other insider violence. The training includes discussions of the four main response options during emergencies, which include evacuation, shelter in place, lockout, and lockdown. Participants will engage in discussion on common physiological responses that occur during emergencies, as well as strategies to combat the potentially debilitating impact of these responses. Middle and high school staff will participate in the training during the August Back to School Professional Development Days. One reason we split it up is because we think the training for elementary staff is going to be somewhat different than secondary staff, just based on more guidance that the kids will need. And so we split it up into two groups also, because the smaller sizes, smaller sizes are a little better. So we had the opportunity with elementary to do that here in August and follow up with some training in the fall. And then we've already got the fall one scheduled for secondary, which will take place on August 22, which is staff's second day back. Finally, but not least, some student supports that have been initiated this past month. On Friday, the high school launched a new school-wide positive behavioral expectation rewards program called Trojan True. The acronym stands for trust, respect, unity, and equity. The high school's PBIS, which is Positive Behavioral Intervention and Support, staff work group helped resurrect and redesign a program that was absent during COVID with an added equity focus. When staff members notice students exemplifying one of the four values, they fill out a postcard acknowledging the positive behavior. Then these postcards are taken to the main office, where they are entered into a weekly raffle for prizes and later sent home in the mail for families to enjoy. A pep assembly was held Friday to launch Trojan True and celebrate the many accomplishments of our students. Second, communities and schools in East Lansing High School have partnered with grit, glam, and guts. This program is designed for teenage girls to find their voice and recognize the power of that voice. This program will offer an eight-week curriculum, with week eight being a celebration at the end of the school year. Meetings will take place during Excel on Tuesdays in room 717, and will begin tomorrow. Parent guardian permission is required, and more information was included in the Friday updates from the high school. And last, East Lansing High School is also partnering with the United Mentoring Program, which I brought to the last board meeting with the middle school implementing the United Mentoring Program activities as well, to provide group, peer, and one-on-one mentoring to promote the successful transition to employment, continued learning opportunities, and independent living. The United Mentoring Program gives students a deeper appreciation of their value, improve and develop communication skills and leadership skills, and promotes the satisfaction of giving back to their school and community. This group will be meeting on Thursdays during Excel, and details were also included in the Friday updates from the high school.
Thank you, Superintendent Liko. Are there questions from board members for the superintendent about the superintendent report?
Can you clarify what the district threat assessment program would look like?
That's in development, so I really can't yet. We've only gone to the basic training. So the advanced training is coming next, where after that, we anticipate pulling together a program. But so far, we've just had a number of staff members attend the basic training. So I really don't have a full understanding of that yet.
Okay. And then another one, I see a lot of these trainings are going to be more for next school year. What... Has there been anything provided to teachers, like a basic active shooter or violence training for this school year?
No.
Okay.
Aside from the drills that we're required to do by the state, so we've had anywhere from two to three lockdown drills already, which are kind of practices for actual lockdowns.
Okay.
Those... Most of our buildings, they have different schedules because they involve coordination with ELPD.
Okay.
So, and I know that ALICE training has been brought up. There's been no decision in the district to utilize ALICE training. So we've previously utilized avoid, deny, defend through previous training with the East Lansing Police Department. So that's... We... There's been no decision in our district to utilize ALICE training, but there are other options available. And through our conversations with both ELPD and Michigan State Police, unfortunately, in our county, there's no coordinated response, which can be really tricky, or no coordinated, I guess, program that's used, because if there's a crisis at a district, it's typical that multiple departments and municipalities respond. So there is conversation at the county superintendent level to try to unify some of our program and common language that I think is still coming from the legislature here later this summer, that will require school districts to use some common language. But it's just important that we have something in place and not necessarily that it's one or the other or the other. Better if it's coordinated, but not always possible.
Thank you.
Is the Rave app currently only being used at the high school, or is it district-wide?
It's not used anywhere yet, because it'll be district-wide.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I know in Eaton County, they use it countywide, which is nice. So the entire county and sheriff's department, et cetera, all utilize it. We do have some packets of it in Ingham County, but it's not countywide. But I know Lansing just also is adopting it or implementing it as well, but we'll have it in place for next fall, but district-wide.
Sure. Other questions for the superintendent? Okay, then we will move on to public comments. For those who are not familiar with the process, there are these blue forms in the back. If you could, if you're interested in making public comment, please fill this out and give it to Mrs. Holcore, and she'll give it to me, so I know to call on you. And I'll read our little statement about public comment. This is the opportunity to address the board. Speakers are to confine their remarks to five minutes. If a speaker requires more than five minutes after all other persons who have requested to speak during this part of the meeting have spoken, that speaker will be allowed additional time. The superintendent or other district staff may comment to clear up or avoid significant misunderstandings. First up, I have Jen Chenault speaking about school safety. And then next up, I have Jared Roberts.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Chenault. I have had three children go through East Lansing Public Schools starting in 2006, '07. And I have a son graduating this year and a daughter, a freshman, in the high school. I had a lot of notes that I wrote today, and it's very hard for me to stand up here in front of you all. I find it extremely difficult to work with any of you. I've tried it multiple ways. We hear, "Don't talk on social media." We hear, "You can write letters, but we probably aren't going to respond." I hardly ever get a response. Once in a while, I'll get a letter saying, "I received your letter." It is... I feel that this district bullies not only parents, taxpayers, children, and you bully each other. And our children deserve so much better, so much better. We all deserve so much better. We don't have to agree on everything. We don't have to be best friends, but we all have to work to keep this district the top, because it used to be the top. I've seen it soar, and it's not anymore. And it's heartbreaking to watch. It's heartbreaking to explain to our children over and over and over what's going on. It's heartbreaking to be called names, to be invalidated. It's heartbreaking to not have compassion or empathy given. It's heartbreaking to send our children day after day and worry if we're going to see them at the end of the school day. And that's my main purpose of being here tonight. It's 100 days into the year 2023. We've had 146 mass shootings in America. It is 14 school shootings that have resulted in mass casualties in the United States. We are years behind other schools in this city as far as training, as far as having buttons that Mary Feta, who is a sitting duck, she's a sitting duck, you all know that, and so is Ms. Tabor, so is whoever the principal will be, and so are your faculty and your other staff members and the children. When I worked in the governor's office, I had a panic button underneath my desk, and I worked for him from 2004 until... I'm sorry, 1994 until 2004. Then I went over to the appropriations senate office. I had two buttons. My knee used to hit one of them, and I'd have Michigan State Police at my door looking at me, saying, "Are you okay? Give me a thumbs up, Jen." We are years behind, and this technology exists and has existed for years. You need to make that a number-one priority. We need to stop giving money, $80,000, to a group in Dexter called... The Donna Kaplowitz Group called Justice Leaders Collaborative. My personal opinion is we need to stop doing glitz, glam, and everything until we make our schools safe. And you know as well as I do, something can get through. Sometimes things happen, and everybody has worked as hard as they can, and it still happens. But we need to be better prepared. We need a button where Mary Feta can push that button, and 911 is at the door. In this last school shooting, I think they said it was seven or 17 minutes. Today, in Kentucky, at the bank, the police were there in four minutes. This is behind. I have friends at Lansing Christian. I have friends at Lansing Catholic. I have friends at Dewitt. I have friends in Okamas. They all have done ALICE training years ago. And you guys all talk about these acronyms. Why isn't ALICE one of the ones that you've already had done? Maybe there are new ones that are coming down that are better? Okay, but start somewhere and do it. Stop wasting time, I beg you, because if something happens, it's going to be on all of you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chenault. Next, we have Jared Roberts speaking of safety, return of resource officers, and then next up will be Cherie Brooks.
Hello. Thank you, everybody, for having us, and thank you for hanging in and hearing what your fellow community members have to say. Last time I wrote you, it was March 13. There have only been five school shootings since the last time I've written you, only five. Now, you can discount three, because two of them were in the parking lot, and probably no security in the world would have changed that. You could perhaps discount one of those because it was on the school bus, and, well, it's, you know, one school bus driver, and probably no resource officer could have changed the dynamic there. But of course, two of them, our situations were having a resource officer present, either potentially or absolutely certainly would have changed the outcome, absolutely certainly. So in Denver, and hopefully, as part of your job, you guys study these things. You read the news, you find out what happened, you see if there's anything we could learn from. Denver, it was a 17-year-old shooter, previously suspended for bringing dangerous weapons to school. Now, that should be a red flag right there, wondering, would we even want to bring this student back? They made the decision to bring this student back. That was a school district that had jettisoned their resource officers in light of recent political considerations. And so they had administrators patting this student down every morning for weapons as part of the return-to-school protocol. And what does he do? He shoots two of these administrators. Now, nobody could say for certain whether a professional police officer performing that pat-down, whether that outcome might have been different or not. But certainly, the other tale with this one is everybody in Denver in that school district saw it coming with this student. There isn't one person who said, "Oh, my God, I would have never seen this student acting out in this way." And that's the way these things almost always are. It's, geez, I should have connected the dots, or I saw it coming, or I warned you about this. It's literally as if these people walk around with a blinking light over the head with the potential of menacing action. The other one, quite obviously, and unfortunately, in heartbreaking manner, is Nashville. Right? So three nine-year-olds exploded by assault weapons. You all remember the Sandy Hook, the testimony, the doctors, what happens when somebody who's this big and this wide gets hit with an assault weapon? I mean, it just turns your stomach. The video of that person shooting through the front door, we all saw that. It gave me an adrenaline rush. I'm, you know, 1,000 miles away. Absolutely gave me an adrenaline rush. It was 13 minutes before the police arrived. Either by the grace of God or dumb luck, that shooter was so inept that they fired 150 rounds inside that school in 13 minutes. And so the fact that only six people were murdered in that school by somebody bearing assault weapons in 13 minutes is amazing. If that was somebody with some tactical prowess, or a grudge, or an ex-military person, or angry cop, or whatever it was... I mean, I don't even need to complete the sentence. If that was somebody that knew what they were doing, and it took 13 or 14 minutes for the police to get there, I mean, they could have taken out the entire school of 200 people. You know, I know people who have been in that business and who know how to use those weapons. And, you know, ask anybody in Nashville, when that person was shooting through the door, would they have preferred an armed responder at the building to engage within a minute or two, especially to engage an amateur? To engage somebody who was just on a whim, decided to grab a gun and start shooting things up? And so the... Most people in the school are going to be no match for that radicalized amateur. But a professional resource officer, it's going to be a different story. Or if nothing else, you saw the videos, the police were going through room to room, room to room, probably took them two or three minutes to get to the scene. You know, so it may have been 15, 16 minutes before that apprehension. Who would say, "I'll prefer 15 minutes. I want four minutes. I want three minutes"? For somebody who knows what they're doing, how many people are going to get shot? You know, or it really makes us think that you're just not that concerned about it. Why wouldn't you want that response to be instantaneous and professional? And somebody who's not going to be panicking, somebody who can call in backup and understand the logistics of how that works and tell them where to go. You know, I mean, if you listen to the police scanner during the horrible MSU shooting, they were getting, you know, reports every 30 seconds, somebody was calling 911. It was almost impossible for them to sort it out and get to where the danger was.
Time has expired, sir.
Okay, well, yep, thank you. But I will add, if, you know, you're willing to pay private security guards instead of getting state... Yeah, thank you.
Instead of getting state funding... You are... You can fill out another blue form and have an additional five minutes at the end of public comment.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Next is Cherie Brooks.
I don't know which one. Which one is... Which paper is that?
Oh, sorry. Areas for consideration for the new hire process.
Perfect. So I am Cherie Brooks, and in this... In these five moments, I'm representing LPAT, which is the East Lansing Parent Advocacy Team. I just wanted to... We sent you all the email with our points of consideration as your team develops the framework for interviewing the new principal. I just wanted to share that response publicly with the community in this moment. Pardon me. We had a discussion around what that candidate for hire should look like, or what that process should look like, and we asked for that hire to be... to have vetted experience. We're looking for experience in team building amongst diverse and even perceived adversarial team and community members, including districts, including district staff, which was a point of discussion as it is related to those with expressed angst and harsh refusals to participate in and/or support DEI-led initiatives. We're asking... We're asking for experience in relationship building across neighboring districts, local businesses, and engaged community support, supported organizations. These things were also a high focus points. The questions that were posed were along the lines of, share your experience with engaging or building buy-in amongst staff or community members that were in opposition to the proposed direction of your leadership or administrative strategic goals. What framework do you utilize when creating space for robust dialogue that is solution-oriented? What framework has been least effective and why? Share a time when you realize that your decisions have had a negative impact? What did you do to make amends, provide restorations or reparations? Provide restoration or reparations? The next point of discussion had a focus on communication. Families often hear members of administration privately disagree with the actions taken or put in place with publicly standing in solidarity. The phrase heard most often is, I mean, I have to stand with administration. This was acknowledged as a complacency, which contributes to an echo chamber of lost trust, lost respect, and diminished value in both the student-to-administrative relationships as well as the community-to-administrative relationships. Questions of the candidate for hire were along these lines. As lead administrator, how do you support those under your leadership with differing opinions? Additionally, how do you work to build a culture where diverse voices and opinions are welcome, yet actions move in the interest of what is best for the students? Oftentimes, attention is given to issues that have the loudest platform or the brightest light. How do you manage these uprisings without losing focus of current or ongoing areas of improvement? Ultimately, LPAT would like to hear how the next candidate for hire will manage the momentum of this moment. The best candidate will be a change agent with experience managing the hard no's and the thoughtful yeses. This person will not be a box checker, but a boots-on-the-ground educational advocate that understands what true diversity looks like, values mental health of both the students and the staff, and is comfortable making matriculation through the district meaningful and positively memorable for all. We ask that their ability to lead speaks to the nature of the child, holds value in the impact that education can have on generations, and is invested in the lifelong learning of all the staff. That's on behalf of LPAT. In addition to that, in this moment, I just, I want to also lend our support to the parents who just spoke. I think what we often hear is that, it sounds as though perfect become, I say it all the time, but it sounds like perfect gets and becomes the enemy of good. Like, instead of, instead of moving with what is good or what works for the moment, you guys strive for perfection, and then that looks like no action. So if there is, if there's an opportunity for us to agree to disagree on some things, but to actually move things forward, I think that's what the community is asking. They're saying, we hear you guys continue to say that you're working on it, you've done these trainings, you've done these things, but then the action gets so far behind the training that what you actually implement isn't necessarily what's needed in the moment. It doesn't match the moment. So in that, I just ask that you all, you know, move to action and let us know what that looks like. Continue to provide a timeline as opposed to just a readout and/or a report, because it often looks like you guys are doing a whole lot of nothing. When I'm sitting in these meetings, and now I know, and there's a lot of conversation and a lot of strategic planning, but you guys have to move to action. That's my time for LPAT.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. You are also the next forum for student recognition.
Thank you. I'm going to flip my hat backwards. In this moment, I am a parent. And in this space, I want to bring to your attention that I asked for recognition for my child, for his accomplishment through Graduation Alliance. This has been an ongoing conversation. We were able to actually move it to something that was critical on March 6th. On March 22nd, I received correspondence saying that, you know, that my request had been acknowledged, but no, it was just being considered. It's April 10th. We're almost one month and one week out, and I haven't heard anything back. I want to provide a little bit more feedback on what recognition looks like. You guys asked me afterwards, what were my thoughts on what did public recognition look like? Because my child does not have an opportunity to necessarily be restored. He's going to graduate. And there isn't necessarily space for reparations because he's going to graduate. So what my ask is for public acknowledgement of his achievement. So what that looks like is, I just want you guys to consider how you celebrate valedictorians, how you celebrate honor society, certain clubs and lettermen. You could do an honor cord or stole that acknowledges or recognizes that this completion is through Graduation Alliance. You can do an asterisk or mark of distinction in the program with a pen or sticker on his diploma. You could provide an opportunity to speak. Now, my child doesn't want that. I want to be very clear that my child would not like an opportunity to speak at graduation. But these are things that you can put in place moving forward. One of the, one of the reasons for the initial denial of my request was because students who graduate early are typically not honored. I think that that's a shameful reply. Why not? And why, why hold on to something that it doesn't even make sense? It just was an easy no instead of a thoughtful yes. So I'm saying, consider it and provide me with an answer. It is, it's April. You guys, now, when we talk about where you actually move on, you move on certain things very, very quickly. Discipline, quick. You got those kids off the building, quick. You got kids signed up for Graduation Alliance, quick. Graduation Alliance has been held as a punitive opportunity to still get a degree here. It's been, it's actually been used as an exclusionary discipline when it doesn't have to be. You guys can make that look different. I'm actually, I actually can see how Graduation Alliance can work for certain people in the district. There's an opportunity for it to be successful, it's something to be celebrated, and I think you're almost missing the opportunity to do that. I know that this is the board, and these things are, have administrative feedback. But I'm asking for your support in that consideration, and I'm asking for acknowledgement, and I want to know what you guys are going to do for my child. That's my time.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks.
Thank you.
I'm going to call this last call for public comment. Next, I have Ashley Alene, speaking about class sizes.
Hi, my name is Ashley Alene. I know a lot of you for a long time. My oldest started at Marble in 2009, and my youngest started at Marble in 2021. So we've been around a long time. I've been watching school board stuff for a really long time. And I first wanted to say thank you for your service. I know it is hard, and I know, I believe, I trust that you all serve with the aim of helping students in our district, and I appreciate that even if there are a lot of disagreements along the way. I also want to say, I appreciate the chances that our district has when we can prevent issues or solve problems rather than waiting until there is a problem and trying to fix it. And so that's why I'm here now. So through all these years, very, very often in September, you hear from parents with concerns about class sizes, especially in early elementary, where students are kind of shocked at the first realization, and then they kind of get used to it. And there's always the same kind of conversation about, how can we respond to this? Well, we don't really know about enrollment figures, which is true. And I wrestled a lot with how to talk about this today because it's complicated. I get that it's really, really complicated. I'm not trying to say this is easy or that there's a straightforward solution. I'm not trying to offer a straightforward solution. But I think we need to have conversations about it rather than what I perceive typically happens, which is that come September, there are these issues, and we, people complain, and there's really nothing much to do at that point. And so we try to assuage the people who are concerned, and then the next year, we wait for the next couple of people who have the same concern, and we try to assuage them, and then we wait until the next year. So I guess what I want to say is, this isn't just an elementary school issue. This is a longstanding issue, and it goes all the way through our school district. And I think we do need to have some very honest conversations about enrollment. I think I requested information from the district back in December and learned that we were, this past fall, so just for one semester, our district paid $46,236 in overages to teachers who were teaching classes which were over their contractual guidelines. That included 27 teachers at the high school and 18 teachers at the middle school at Marble, where my daughter's now a first grader. Her cohort is still five students over even the first grade contractual guidelines. Even, that's a decrease from last year because the kindergarten classes are meant to be smaller. And there are five out of 12 classes there that are over the contractual guidelines. But I want to emphasize that this, while you probably mostly hear from elementary kids, I was actually surprised to learn that there were 27 teachers at the high school with overages and 18 at the middle school. So I want to emphasize that this is not just a matter of the distribution of students across the district or in fact, just a matter of, well, we are obliged to serve all the students in a particular catchment. This is a decision we can actually plan ahead for at the middle and the high school levels, at the very least. So we can't control how many students are in our district. That's an increasing number, and that's a good thing. What we can control are two things. We can control how many teachers we hire, and we can control how many students we admit into our district through schools of choice. As far as I can tell, those are the only two ways we can control this issue. As Mrs. Lico mentioned, this May, we will make decisions about schools of choice numbers, as you do every May. I've watched for a long time, and I've never seen what I consider to be a really robust conversation. Maybe I just missed it. Certainly possible it's happened, maybe it's happened behind closed doors. But I think if we're going to continue to have these overages, if we're going to continue every single September to have parents coming and saying, why is my kindergartner in a class of 26 students, as I did two years ago? I think we need to have the conversation now in April, not in September. I also think there, I mean, there are a lot of reasons why I think this is important. I think one reason it's important is because if we want to attract and retain great teachers, I just saw the fantastic honor presented to Ms. Kuzak at Green. I just happened to notice on the list I had, she had five students over her contractual number for her class this year. So that's a, that's a, I imagine she's probably as well-equipped as anybody to handle a kindergarten class of five students over the normal limit. But I hate to treat a great teacher that way. I also think it'll help with, actually, I wanted to say one other thing. Never mind. Thanks.
You're welcome to fill out another blue form, Dr. Alene, if you want to come back. Mark Colley, and that's my last form, unless folks want to.
Hello, I'm Mark Colley, 2143 Okamas. Used to be a sub here, I still sub in the district. I'm not really prepared to say what I want to say. I want to talk about the previous meeting, and then when I hear Cherie Brooks talk, I want to talk about what she has to talk about. I want to talk about the student overages. But, so let's, let me start. At the last meeting, that was Thursday, it was a special board meeting that Dorinda Carter Andrews came and talked, and there was some confusion, or at least I was confused, about the, some of the issues Trustee Fink wanted to discuss. Say they were, they weren't seconded, her motions weren't seconded. And there was, I believe, some consideration of how to solve that. And I hope there is ways to solve that, because one of the issues she wanted to discuss was back on November 8th, 2021, and that was violence. And that wasn't seconded, or I forget the exact details, but the conversation never happened. What, and as that discussion was happening this last Thursday, as you were trying to resolve, one of the reasons why it couldn't be discussed was that it might be a surprise to some people. And I felt like on that November 8th, after Janelle Orange, who I think was representing the East Lansing Education Association, had thanked you guys for some of the measures you had made, like hiring more student supports, but she was pretty adamant about getting all the board members into the school to see exactly what the climate was there. I don't know if anyone had went and checked it out, but that was, her urgency seemed to convey the necessity for more solutions. Two weeks before that, on October 25th, 2021, the president of the Student Union, Norm Scott, spoke. And I transcribed that, was going to print it out and give it to everyone, or make it available to everyone, I should say. Because, and his discussion kind of got suppressed from the other hoo-ha about canceling Halloween and Valentine's Days. But Norm Scott painted a picture. And that's one thing, he, there was like two or three reports from the ELA, ELEA president. It seemed to go like three weeks in a row. I don't, is that like a regular thing, or it should be a regular thing, so we can hear directly from the teachers? Because as we talk about audits and whatnot, I think we really need to hear about, from teachers about classroom management and other things. I'm bouncing around because I'm not ready for this. However, going back from the, back to 2021, when Janelle Orange painted that picture, invited all the board members, implored you to come to the schools, you may have, I don't know. So it sounded a criticism. However, and two weeks before that, Norm Scott painted the picture of the violence at the schools. He said even that day, while he was talking to you, that medical assistance had to be called to help a teacher and a student, and I believe at the high school and the middle school. All those specifics might be a little iffy, but, and this was a long line of incidents of violence and just general unruliness, which, you know, COVID may have had a big impact on that. Regardless, Norm Scott, who I believe, I don't know him, but as he's painting this picture, and I'm guessing he was watering it down a little bit, but he used the word chaos in the school districts. That was October 25th, 2021. He talked about, again, medical assistance being needed. And two weeks later, when Janelle Orange brought this up again, or referenced it and wanted the people to come in, that was when Trustee Fink said she wanted to talk about the violence. That conversation was not had. It was actually really pushed aside, too. And so if there's any improvement in allowing for discussions because they aren't seconded, and we can't, you can't just accept anything that's put forth for a motion, obviously. However, if the East Lansing president, Teacher Union president, is saying there's chaos in the schools, I don't think that should require a seconding. It should be discussed, especially in the history of the school district, or the board members who have jumped at to make solutions to protect kids, say, the two girls that gave the presentation on, I think it was April 22nd, 2019, and the Chelsea Wade incident, which was justified. But the board can act, and they jump, and there's a lot of bravery here, I know that. But when it's absent, it's still a problem. I have a lot more to say on that. I could make a document, oh, I couldn't. But I would like to talk more about that, but, yeah. Hopefully, you find a solution for something to be seconded.
Thank you, Mr. Colley. Jen Schnell, speaking about National Honor Society and recognizing students.
I promise I'll keep this really short. I really connected with what Cherie said. When my daughter, the oldest, went to East Lansing High School in 2018, she graduated. But every year, the National Honor Society would recognize students, and it was like a school assembly. And the And the first year, I think some feelings were hurt because, oh, you know, I missed it by one point, I'm, whatever. And then Mr. Wells decided to include in the assembly anybody who had improved their GPA, anybody who had done something really amazing to help a student, a teacher. And also, you know, I know a lot of people are going to say, "Well, we recognize sports kids at the C A A C," or whatever. But, you know, to have a group of kids who are really amazing at their sport be recognized, or a music student, or whatever, that was really cool. And I wish that the East Lansing High School would bring that back, because it was wonderful to watch the kids who, some of them had one-point-fives, and I knew one of them that did, and they raised it to like a two-point. And it was really cool to watch that student be able to be recognized. And I want to see the students who graduate early, or the kids who, you know, historically have had issues, whether it be behavioral, or whatever it is, learning disabilities. I think everybody would like to see some positive stuff about that, and it's not hard. You just stand up and you say, "I want to, you know, look at these kids who are really working hard." It does a lot. It really goes far. So, that's a thing I hope you'll consider, and that all the schools do it. It'd be great. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Okay, I will close public comment at this time. Next, we move to board discussion. So, we've approached board discussion a few different ways in my time on the board. In our board retreat last week, we talked about communication preferences in general, and we, well, communication in general and communication preferences was a specific topic. And one of the decisions or agreements that we came to was, whenever possible, we would send our topics for board discussion to the board president and superintendent the Thursday before the meeting, which is when we set the agenda. And that way, the topic for board discussion can be set on the agenda, and the public will know what the board discussion topic will be, and board members will be prepared to have that discussion if they choose. That said, of course, any board member is entitled to bring up any topic for board discussion at any time, or any topic for discussion at any time on the agenda. And the agenda can be amended at any time. We do that all the time for items that need to be added. So, this is just specifically in reference to the item of board discussion. I did include, I kept it on the agenda for tonight, just because I wasn't sure for this item. So, it's on the, it's on the agenda for tonight. And moving forward, though, I'll adhere to our agreement from last Thursday about how we will proceed. So, with all of that said, are there any board members who are interested in having board discussion? Or making comments? Okay, hearing none, we will move to action items. Okay. No, that's okay.
So, I just wanted to bring up two things. One, I made a phone call to Trustee Tally as the chair of the facilities committee. The city of East Lansing is participating in no-mow May as an attempt to protect pollinators throughout the district. And I just thought that maybe that could be discussed at facilities, some sort of participation. I know that we have to mow close up to the buildings for safety and all of that, but if there are parts of our facilities that we can go without mowing and allow to go a little wild, and it's far enough away from the kids' play and stuff. So, that was one thing that I wanted to bring up.
Before you go on, Kath, if you don't mind, we talked about that at cabinet this morning. So, I just maybe should have included it in my updates, but didn't think to. So, we discussed this at cabinet this morning, had the same conversation around, like, are we going to be able to not mow the baseball infield for a month? No. But are there areas we can participate in and do it? Yes. So, Rich is communicating with our facilities director to take a look and evaluate where we can do that. So, we've got the ball rolling. It can still be discussed at facilities committee, but we started that conversation and process for identifying those areas this morning.
Awesome. Great. We're on the same wavelength. Actually, a couple of other things. So, the next one was, I had a graduate last year who went through convocation, which I assume we're still doing. Okay. That was a ceremony, I'm just kind of speaking to you, where she got her BSU stole, her National Honor Society cord, and I'm assuming somehow that that would be the way to acknowledge other, other students who are graduating and at that time. The one thing you brought up that I hadn't really thought about, Ms. Cherie, is the kids who graduate early, because sitting through lots of graduations, they aren't listed in the program, so I don't know if we can look into a separate thing for the program that everybody who's graduated through that course of the year or something. I don't know if that's, that's just off the top of my head with that thought on other early graduates. But convocation seems to me the place to acknowledge students' academic success. I think two, two things that have been done in the district were maybe put together, the, there had been for years, what was that called, when the kids did get acknowledgement for increasing their GPA? And that was once a marking, wasn't it, once a semester, I believe? And I think it just passed away, passed away, disappeared during COVID?
I'd have to follow up with the high school admin to speak really informed on it, and I'm.
No, except though, I actually, again, had a kid who made an improvement after COVID, one of my kids, that got an acknowledgement for that. So, I don't know that that has gone away, that that may have gone away with Mr. Wells and not carried over, but I would agree that that was a good program.
I'll follow up with the high school admin. I just wasn't prepared to speak about it, so I don't have all the right information, yeah.
And then to decrease the confusion on seconding, obviously, we can discuss anything during this period of time. It's motions to actually take action that require a second. And it is our duty as elected officials to support motions that we feel should be supported based on all of the things. And seconding a motion shows, is lending support. If you don't support the motion, then you shouldn't second a motion. But there's ample opportunity for discussion at any point in time on lots of issues. So, I just wanted to clarify on that. I'm done discussing.
Okay. Is there additional discussion?
Just something brief, but something that occurred to me, because I, you know, I'm still, this is only my second meeting, back since being appointed to the board, but I know that the, there is some, some real concern in the community that I share about the steps we're taking to secure our buildings and to make sure that our kids are safe. And there's a perception among some people who made public comments that our district's not showing as many tangible outputs as perhaps we'd like to see. This is something that is discussed in just about every committee meeting in some capacity, whether it's finance, how are we going to pay for it? Whether it's academic and technology, how are we using our technology? Whether it's facilities, you know, what are we doing to our facilities to improve it? And we have identified, and this is just from, you know, seriously, less than a month of experience back on the board, back on the inside, so to speak, we've identified some areas where we believe there might be vulnerabilities, or we could do better, and we have addressed those immediately. Now, there's not going to be an email blast to the whole world, we're not going to put it in the news, because in effect, we're telling people what we believe would be our weaknesses. And so, it was discussed, I was at a committee meeting today that was open to the public where we discussed these topics, and there was nobody from the public there. But it was part of our technology presentation at the meeting, where Christian Palasty, our excellent director of technology, went through interventions that we've taken in the last two or three months that have increased security specifically in this building, and additional measures that we're taking in other buildings. But if we had talked about those things prior to those interventions being taken, it might be counterproductive, because it might make us more vulnerable. And so, I appreciate that there is concern, that we're not, that perhaps it looks like these things aren't happening, or they're not happening on the calendar that we'd like to see them happen on. But I think that as people who are engaged in the process know that there are things happening, and they will continue to happen, and I'm hopeful that, that some of the tangible outputs that the folks here are looking for will be evident as quickly as possible. But there are, there are big tangible things happening, and there are big tangible things that have already happened that, that make me feel more, that make me feel more secure as a parent in the community, as a parent in the district, and I have complete confidence in our people that we will continue to take these steps to make sure that this district is as safe as possible.
Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, I mean, although the, maybe like, attention, and we're not in the news, and like, that stuff has subsided a little bit, but the focus hasn't shifted for us. Like, it's still something that I wake up thinking about, it is still something that, you know, like Chris said, in every committee meeting, everywhere we go, like, it is still something that is absolutely at the top of the list of things that the people that we have charged with responsibility in the district are thinking about and planning about and putting plans in place. It is, they are the questions we ask as board members about, hey, are we thinking about this, and what are our plans for that? And I'm reassured, today I asked a question about something back from the survey and said, is this, did this, you know, like, are we, no, there's a lot going on, and so I hesitate to even ask. And our assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction and assessment said, like, no, no, we had a meeting about it today, and we're thinking and planning and moving things forward. And I'm like, oh, gosh, of course you guys are, you know, and I appreciate that. I'm not put off at all by the questions that come up during public comment, because of course, our community is concerned, and you should be. Safety is important, and we're charged with the responsibility to be thinking and focused on these issues. So, and that, so that's fine. It is always, it's, speaking for myself personally, it's always like, how to communicate about these things, to make sure that the public is informed. Like, I feel like we share information, and information comes out, and, you know, the superintendent shares in her update, like, this thorough, you know, like, we're trying, and, you know, like Chris said, we had this thorough presentation in academic tech today about the technological implications, and, you know, I understand, like, we're all busy, nobody could be there. It's just, you know, we are doing the best that we can, but it's absolutely the case that these are not things that have fallen off the radar, or that people are not interested in, or not thinking about, or there aren't plans in place, and that the, we aren't working through the checklist of what are the immediate things, what's the mid-range things. And it's also the case that there are, we're never going to be doing all of the things that people want us to be doing. Like, that's also fair. And I will raise my hand and say, we are never going to be doing every single thing that every single person wants us to be doing about all of the things on the list. So, balancing that reality as well. But we, you know, the plans are moving forward, and the thoughts are happening, and the action is being taken. Yeah, I guess that's what I would add at this point.
The updates I share do get posted on our website every Tuesday morning after every meeting, so they are accessible to everybody as well.
If I may, I think what I just heard from the community was that they want more, not to take away from anything that's been done. But if this is all we keep hearing is, but we're doing this, but we're doing this, and they're saying, "You're hurting me, you're hurting me, you're hurting me," there's a disconnect somewhere. They just said it again. We're asking for communication, we're asking for safety. Not that we want you to do this, but we want to see you have a conversation. That's what they're asking for, not this, my understanding. I apologize if that was aggressive, not intended.
Okay, then I will move on to action items. We have two. The first relates to the designation of authority to enter into contracts. Would someone be interested in offering a motion related to action item A?
I move that the Board of Education delegates the authority to enter into contracts to Dori Leiko, superintendent.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Edsel, seconded by Trustee Martin. Is there any discussion?
Just briefly, this is, this is in response to one of our policies that requires us to have a designee for entering into contracts. Is that right? Or?
It, and I'll speak just as policy chair. It clarifies the situation that is currently in policy, which doesn't designate anyone, which then requires all contracts to come to the board. And there are a lot of very small contracts that don't, that aren't necessarily handled at the board level, or don't need to be handled at the board level. And so, the policy says the board or their designee. So, this is just clarifying who that designee is.
That part.
Yeah.
And is not abdicating in the board's responsibility, it's just clarifying, if I'm understanding correctly, that the designee is Dori Leiko.
Correct.
And there are.
For clarifying my clarification.
There are classes of contracts, especially with regard to dollar amounts, that have to come to the board.
Absolutely.
And so, we're, yeah, so these are, we're talking about relatively mundane contracts in this, this case.
Absolutely. I mean, yes.
I'm in favor of the motion as presented by Trustee Edsel. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, action item relates to the food service truck bid. Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approves the purchase of a food service truck from Longhammer Ford in the amount of sixty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Okay. It's moved by Trustee Edsel, seconded by Trustee Ferris Highland. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, so, being the finance chair. Those of us who've been around, we approved a similar contract, I don't know, two years ago, year and a half, year and a half ago, and we were, as of, I don't know, six weeks ago, still waiting. And so, we canceled that contract, and coming back with a new contract for a different truck that the chassis is built, correct? So, it definitely at this point has a chassis, and hopefully will get to us in a more timely fashion. But as many, many things have, the price of the truck has gone up.
Are there any other questions?
Just a clarification, it's not in addition to the other truck, it's in place of the other truck.
Other questions? I'm in favor of the motion as presented by Trustee Edsel. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next on the agenda are committee reports, academic tech.
We met today, as was mentioned, and we had, the meeting was a lot about our technology, and Christian Palasty talked about summer projects with different technologies such as iPads and PCs that will be worked on, service, server updates, auditorium lighting, AV updates, senior laptop collection, and website updates that will be happening. He also. He also discussed cybersecurity updates, having a cyber response plan. All of these things that we have done and have in place, we just don't have in written form. And so this will be done over the summer. That he's been working on it and hopefully will be completed this summer. And then security updates, security cameras that are being updated and installed. Talked a little bit about clarification of a lockdown button in, in the high school and then communication software improvements. And so we'll all have the notes up and sent over to Kelly either tonight or tomorrow to be put on the website. And our tentative next date is May 5th at, I can't remember the time, 11:00 or 11:30. But that will be on the website as well, as soon as it's verified.
One addition to your very comprehensive report is that our two student representatives on academic.
Oh, yes.
You want to go ahead?
No, go ahead.
Our seniors, and so will be graduating. So one side note is that we'll, the assistant superintendent will be looking for replacing our student representatives on that committee. But also, ooh, don't tell anybody, you guys, it's a secret, about thinking about how to honor them at the next meeting and, you know, wish them well as they move on to the next phase of their little lives. So, yeah, but don't tell them, it's a secret.
At your next academic tech?
Yeah, at the next academic tech meeting, yeah. Because it'll be the last one of the school year. Okay, next, facilities.
We meet tomorrow at 11:15 here.
Ooh, fun. All right, next, finance.
Finance met March 15th. Discussed a handful of items. The first was to put out an RFP for the food service management because this was the last year we could go without reopening it for bids. We do this in conjunction with DeWitt. Bids were due April 4th at 2:00 PM. And then the contract for that bid will be brought to the board at the end of April. We just discussed the food service truck contract, so I'll skip that item. There were some changes in the 147 C2 MIPSers funds, which will be reflected in revenues. But this isn't in and out. So it, it's used a fund to cover the statewide MIPSers liability. Hiring of the three DK security personnel will run us about $113,000 annually. That was discussed. Rich was able to renew an accounting software after negotiations that saved the district about $111,000.
Holy moly.
So that was awesome. As also discussed earlier, second semester class size overages were about $37,000, which is a decrease from first semester. And had a very high-level discussion of the 2324 budget preparation process. Our next meeting will be April 19th at 12:30.
Thank you. Next, intergovernmental, trustee Fink.
Okay, I'm going to try to abbreviate this. I don't, I don't know if you can hear me. It doesn't appear that my mic is on and it's four pages. The first part of my update.
I can switch spaces.
It's four pages. The first part of my updates is the minutes, March 15th meeting. All of this will be supplied and documented with the minutes for this meeting. The second part of my update is discussing local updates of note. So I hope you can hear me. Mayor Bacon has invited local teens to be an integral part of forming a new youth commission for the city of East Lansing by participating in one or more of three upcoming focus groups. All of this information will be provided in the minutes. If you are interested, there are three upcoming event, well, two after today, and the information will be provided. Also, there's some local information regarding what's going on in return, in regards to the legislature. If you are interested in that, follow that information. Reach out to your representatives as you deem necessary. The information will be provided. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Fink. Next is personnel. We will be meeting next Tuesday in this room, Tuesday, April 18th at 9:00 AM. The notice has already been released, but I was finalizing the agenda, which will be, which I was able to do this afternoon. And so the public announcement will be updated to include the agenda items tomorrow, probably tomorrow, I would imagine. Policy.
Policy, back to me. All right, policy met March 23rd. We discussed policy 5206. Had to, had to work on some language there so that it coordinated between the superintendent's role and suspensions from six to 10 days, including that 10th day in the board's role, which is anything after 10 days. Because there was some language there that conflicted on that, on both 5206 and then 5206A. So we discussed both of those. Those corrections should have been in items of information today. And will come before us to make those corrections at the next board meeting. We discussed policy 4101 dot 01. When we approved that policy, just over a year and a little bit ago.
Tell us which one that is.
A holiday policy.
Oh, yeah. The religious observance, cultural observance.
Right. There wasn't a, a, this was, this is our own policy. In the transfer, we didn't put a limit to the number of days. And we made the decision to put a limit to the number of days at three. So again, that should be in items of information for a vote. There were two new policies presented to us by Trune. One is Head Start COVID mitigation policy that a policy committee discussed and deemed unnecessary because we don't do any actual Head Start. While we service Head Start kids, we don't do any actual Head Start programming. And then there was new language regarding testing in, that was added to policy 3100, the district technology and acceptable use policy. A whole new section D was added. We looked at the optional language there. But basically, the gist of all of it is during testing section, sessions, what devices and so forth can you have? Or most of them you basically can't have, including, you know, watches and all of those things. And so just putting that into policy was recommended by Trune. So that policy will be in items of information to be adopted in two weeks. Continued work on the equity policy. We will need to do, continue to do further work on that at our next meeting. Once we update the 5206 language, we need to correct that for disciplinary hearing packages. We've had a out-of-date or out-of-policy language piece in there that needs to get corrected. We discussed that L-PAD is working on a forum to be able to access student records. I had an email communication today with Ms. Brooks. And they're going to work on getting their finalized copy for us to look at that and to work on implementing that. We also discussed an onboarding policy for new school board members to include minimal building tours, meet with the superintendent and president, which MASP training, new board orientation, et cetera. And if any of you have ideas to send in for that policy, because it involves all of us and future us, that something we'll be creating in the near future. I am working with Trune on the policy surrounding curricular animals because our dogs aren't, are actually owned by the district. They're not therapy dogs coming in from outside. And Trune's base policy is more about dogs coming from the outside and being used for therapy. But we actually own them. Next policy is April 13th at 10:00 AM.
Okay, are there any announcements by board, board members this evening? Or the superintendent? I guess you could make announcements too. All right, hearing none, I will call us adjourned at 8:21 PM. Thanks, everybody.